We have Matt coming?
He's right outside.
If you want to rise, we're gonna start the meeting off with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We thank you all for coming, hopefully you all had a chance to sign in, try to sign in feet out front. If you have cell phones with you, we ask that you have them turned off so we don't get interrupted in the middle of things. And we can start off with a roll call.
Henry Hale?
Yes.
Marian Alexandro?
Yes.
Patrick Duane?
Yes.
Melanie Mar?
Yes.
Steve McQuade, Steve, I'm home.
Here.
Brett Baker?
Here.
Matthew Batrow?
Here.
All right, then we have a motion that the meeting was advertised as required.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Second. And then roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale?
Yes.
Marian Alexandro?
Yes.
Patrick Duane?
Yes.
Melanie Mar?
Yes.
And we have a motion to approve last month's minutes and waive the reading of those minutes.
Motion.
Second.
And roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale?
Yes.
Marian Alexandro?
Yes.
Patrick Duane?
Yes.
Melanie Mar?
Yes.
And we can go on to our new business that are opened up, like old business, I guess.
Yes, so it's appeal seventeen twenty-eight, Target. Do you like to come front and center? We'll introduce them, I'll let you have at it. So Target Corporation is on sixty Smithfield Boulevard, they're looking for an errand errands for signage. Request to be allowed to install two additional building signs, increase the square footage of an existing sign that would increase the overall square footage to five hundred ninety-six point five square feet from the previous granted five hundred forty square feet, which is more than the size allowed for the building in a T-five, now a T-five town center district. Brett has some of the details and what was submitted for you guys to go over in case you guys don't know where Target is or what they're asking for.
So this is a list of the signs that were previously granted, we have one Target sign on the logo for a hundred eighty-one square feet, the pharmacy sign for thirty-five square feet, two logo signs for two hundred eighty-eight square feet, and a panel sign of thirty-six square feet. This is the interstate, Champlain Center Mall, Target is located over here on the north end of the mall. And this is the red T-five district here where the mall is located. It's a little bit closer view, the mall here, Target here with the parking lot that extends around. You get a little bit better aerial view, you can kind of pick up on some of the signage here and here, this end. This would be the theater on the east side, where the movie theater is, there's a little more signage there. There's more close-ups, this is the front of the store, you have the Target sign here, you have the pharmacy sign here. This would be the north wall facing Tom Miller Road with the Target emblem there. Again, we're back over by the movie theater entrance on the east side of the building with another Target emblem there. We get into the proposed sites of the new signage submitted, I believe there's copies of that in your packages. And then there are some views also submitted of where the signage is intended to go.
Brett, can you, I thought you said there is three, we saw three of the big circles, right?
Correct, so you have...
And that wasn't listed in the original two hundred and eighty-eight square feet, it was something two.
On the original...
Bullseye. So one of them has, it's listed differently because one of them has the Target wording behind it, and then the others just are the bullseye by themselves. But it's in there, see, one Target sign and logo, and then two logo signs.
So this will be, this will be the front of the main entrance, the Target sign and logo, and then the two logo signs of the other two, just the, essentially the bullseyes over on the west side, or excuse me, the north side and the east side. You can take it from here.
Perfect, so yeah, I'm Abrell, I'm with Kimberly Horn on behalf of Target. And as mentioned, we are proposing two additional wall signs, one being an order pickup sign and one being a drive-up sign, as well as replacing the existing signage that is there and also relocating the CBS sign. The purpose to do this is to enhance wayfinding for customers so we can improve the traffic flow in the parking lots to let customers know what areas to go for the appropriate services. The signs are intended to be visible from the entrance of the store, it can slide very tight large.
So, do you have given any thought to the ability of using directional signage?
This is very standard signage for all Target stores.
That's not the question.
Directional signage in what sense?
Well, directional signage, you don't actually even need a variance for.
Right.
You have the ability to put up signage saying you can go to this area with arrows and whatever.
Right, well, so there's already a drive-up area there with striping, so the drive-up, big drive-up wall sign that would be put on the store is also to tell the customers, we are offering this service. So both wayfinding and visibility and informational purposes. So it's a mixture of all of it, not only wayfinding, so it's more so just to tell the customers, this is a service that's provided. And if the sign wasn't there, the customers wouldn't be able to know that service is there.
Except for you could have five drive-up this way signs or whatever throughout the parking lot if you wanted to.
Understood. This is just customary to what Target does, I understand your concern.
Yeah. I'm gonna go through a question way back when, when this was first done. This was, I'll go back way, way back, because everything was going on when the mall first opened. And having hills and Ames there and everything else. What was the square footage back then? Do you remember any memory of that?
Hills, I was in high school.
I was in law.
I could go back as far as Ames, and Ames had five hundred and forty-five point five total square footage signage.
That's as far back as...
Thank you, yeah, just rubbing in a little bit more, go ahead.
Henry, that was thirty-plus years ago.
That can't be, because I'm not that old at the time.
You do.
And this would be the new town center. What would be the next one, square footage that would be allowed? Because this Target was actually put in before the town center.
So today, what it would be?
Yeah.
Hundred and thirty-three. You're at?
Five hundred and forty-five or whatever.
Four point, four hundred and something, or square feet than what is allowed. Not even close.
Makes it tough, makes it tough. Open up public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? Seen anybody raise a hand? We did get from the copy of...
Yes, so this did go down to Clinton County Planning Board for a two thirty-nine M referral. Referral forty-nine twenty-five, Town of Plasberg Zoning Board of Appeals, applicant Target, area variance at sixty Smithfield Boulevard. Project description, install two additional building signs, but they increased the square footage of the existing sign. This would increase the overall square footage of five hundred ninety-six point five square feet, previously granted five hundred forty. The Clinton County Planning Board at its August sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting voted to consider this referral local issue with the following comments forward to the town. The town should consider requesting the applicant to reduce the size of the proposed additional signs to minimize the area variance being granted by the town, Thomas LaBumbarda.
And I'll go to inform everybody, if anybody have any other questions, I'll let you let the relate.
I'm having the comments, except that with the new red background, I had actually looked up, and when you have a background that is needed for visibility so that that white stands out, the background should be included in the square footage.
Okay.
So to, to me, that frontage there, that looks more like a billboard, that's huge. And the visibility, I'm sure you could see that from way past that road, just in front of the mall.
Another issue I might have, but I'll just put it out there, is you have a, on the north side of the building, you have a Target sign. And would you be willing to give that up for other signage that you want? Because it just faces the woods on top of it.
Right.
And a parking lot.
Right.
So as far as, that might be something to consider.
I see.
It would put us more in line with the square footages, no, actually?
Yeah, we're just trying to keep it.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
If we were to remove that one, would we still have approval for the walls, the order pickup sign and the drive-up sign? Because those are our main priority.
Well, I mean, that's what we're discussing.
The least amount of variance requested, so we're going through the balancing test that I'm sure you're aware of, New York State balancing test, whether the applicant can achieve it by other methods. So if you're not increasing it, Henry alluded to it, they're asking some of those, that's just question number one. You still have to get through the other five.
Right.
The other issue too, and I should have brought this up before, pretty obvious, because of the number of board members here tonight, you need to get three yes votes. If you get, if it goes two to two, you don't get the variance. So I should have let you know this before, if you want to ask, have this continued next month so that there's more board members here, so you're not in that situation, we can sort of do that now and stop the discussion and have a next one. That goes to all the applicants tonight, just because the number of board members here, if more than one votes against you, it's never bad.
Steve? Do you think your draw was this submitted?
Given we are local, it might be difficult for us to come back for the next meeting, so ideally...
Continue on.
Continue on.
Well, I mean, that's the other thing is that, I don't know if Target would agree if they wanted to take out one of the other signs.
Right.
Or not either, so I mean, that's...
Yeah, it's a discussion we'll have to have with Target.
But if it was to be granted, for your drive-up sign, then, then that would still be, needed to be approved by Target still, right?
Yes, exactly.
So that might, that might, I guess what we're trying to say, you might want to table it, even though it's distance.
Right.
You could work with phone, so...
Yeah, we presented this to Target knowing that we would have to come back, because we understood that because we are modifying specifically the main Target logo, since it is increasing in size, we would have to come back regardless. So we went to Target and asked, should we modify the signage to try to stay within what's already granted? But we, our approach was here, or something like that, here, we might as well attempt to see what the variances of all of these proposed signage. So that was more what we were looking at. But we're willing to work with you for our situation to get, mostly the order pickup and the drive-up sign. If it would be easier, maybe a possible solution is to add maybe the order pickup sign as a vinyl sign on the window, if that's something that would be...
If you put a sign on the inside of the window, it isn't a sign anymore.
Right, but I'm saying that it would reduce the square footage we are asking for.
Right.
For the variance.
Yeah, like the, said, anything that reduces the variance, that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
So are we going sign by sign then?
So there's also the point that Brett has brought up, that the signage that was submitted here, as Marian said, and as the hunting one, is the red right here, if you added that in, that's an extra one thousand one hundred and eighteen more square feet that would be added for the discussion of the red being part of the sign, so that's a whole nother discussion. It wouldn't go a little bit, then it would be sixteen hundred and, it would be even more.
Right. Okay, so if we look at EO one, it's not actually a new, or it's, it's new, but it's not replacing an existing.
Sorry, I'm not sure, EO one on...
Yeah, it's right here.
Which lettering, Henry, does that lettering or the overall, this one?
Oh, I see.
It's EO one is...
Yes, so that bullseye...
Rear elevation.
That one is, would be a decrease of the bullseye that is, that is currently there. So right now, that bullseye is a hundred and forty-four square feet, and the new proposed one would be a hundred and thirteen.
And mine says new square footage is one forty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One forty-four.
Yeah. Two oh six.
EO one? One forty-four.
EO one is the...
No, I understand, I...
The sign facing basically the woods and...
Yeah.
And propose twelve-foot logo, square footage, one forty-four, I guess.
No, I see what you're seeing, just because on the ones I have, those say a hundred and thirteen, that should be a hundred and thirteen. Because I believe we submitted the elevations.
But then that doesn't reduce...
Yes, it is a reduction in size, the only increase in the logo size is the main Target on the front.
When you say the front, what, that's the building we're talking about now, when you say the front, do you mean like the bottom left-hand, that?
Yes.
In main address, sorry.
Yes, correct, my, I was misunderstood.
No, that's a great, just because my wife is like a super Target shopper, so I'm very familiar with this location. It is, it's a cluster getting in and out of there with the drive-ups and...
Right.
Is there ever been a thought of moving like the drive-up parking to like the top left where there is never any parking, there's exterior doors, it would seem safer for everybody, it would make a lot of sense, not that left, if they're over there, right there, it's not... That's a dead zone in the parking lot, there's never anybody in there, there's exterior doors, it would be safer for everybody, and that would maybe enhance the argument of signage there as far as drive-up to direct drivers there instead of, and you're taking, they're taking up like ten fine spots people always fight over.
Right.
It just seems like there's so much congestion near that one main entrance right now, that adding signage there, I think is just gonna make it cloudier for people, give them more distraction.
I understand. Currently, we aren't proposing any parking improvements to the drive-up, that's not to say that could happen in the future. Right now, we're only coming for the signage variance. If those conversations go down the line, we'd be more than happy to discuss the relocation of the drive-up spaces, just not something we're currently proposing right now.
All right, so sign EO one, the current ground symbol.
Yes.
Is one hundred thirteen square feet.
Yes.
Which would be a reduction in size of thirty-one square feet.
Although she said the only sign that was increasing is the front sign.
Right.
So if that's the only one increasing, then the other ones are staying the same.
No, they're not.
They're becoming smaller.
Oh, they are, the one forty fours are all reducing?
Yes, yeah, they should be one thirteen, I'm very...
Oh, the next one is one hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah.
And so it's supposed to have the one thirteen also?
Yeah, both of those should be one thirteen, I am surprised you didn't catch this, so in this drawing, that would be EO two and EO one.
So you'd be at thirty-eight square feet of reductions, so...
Yeah.
Okay. EO four is the CBS... Imagine that stays the same, just we relocate it.
Correct.
EO five is your drive-up sign.
Can we just do one thing, just so, I want to use, we got the same sheet you guys are working on, would you just find reading down, you see EO one on your sheet going down to what?
One thirteen.
What about EO two?
That is also one thirteen.
Okay, EO three, I've got one ninety-five point seven.
I also have that.
Okay, EO four, thirty-seven point five, plus minus.
EO five, is that the...
That's the proposed...
EO four says...
Drive-up. Or is the CBS care mark that stays the same?
Okay, so EO five is the base with channel letters, drive-up red.
Yeah.
The drive-up, how much do you have there?
I have seventy-seven point two.
Correct.
Okay, the next one, EO six, the letter is white, twenty-four point six.
Correct.
All right, so I just wanted, so what I just, what you just said, correct, it goes to what you're actually asking for.
Yes.
The one thirteen, one thirteen, okay, so that potentially decreases the variance, so let's, I just wanted to get those numbers straight, so we're all working out the same information. I'll let Brett do the math, because Pass is not here.
What does EO six actually say?
EO six says is order pickup.
Do you think which one of those might, you might be able to put in the window instead of on the building?
Exactly.
The order pickup one.
Which number is that?
EO six.
The small is one, the twenty-four point six.
Okay.
Sixty-two point six square feet reduction so far.
Now the other thing again is the red background. Can you move a red background and highlight the building, but get the signs off it?
That would be a discussion I would have to have with Target, unfortunately I cannot speak to that right now.
Say that to me, say that to me again, what did she say?
She wants the, the Target circle off of the red background.
Okay.
So this one right here, if we look, if we look at that red, we can look at that, the top one instead of the bottom one.
I think that's been done in other locations.
It has.
Yeah, that's the other option, paint the whole building red, as stupid as that sounds, and it doesn't, and that, that doesn't count.
Yeah, that's true.
I think they were going for different colors, I don't like...
Let's see the Target.
There's sixty-two point, point six square feet compared to the drive-up of seventy-seven point two. So basically, fifteen point four square feet increase. We need Pass up here tonight for doing our...
It's still be four hundred and seventy-two square feet over, because what they're...
Compared to what it is today.
Because we opened up the original variances, so the request for rehearing, so all variances are open. Once you open up the original one, and you have all variances that were given are now on the table.
We're at that with a, we're at that here.
Yeah.
That doesn't take into account, though, if you do...
Yeah. That makes it simple.
Yeah.
So not taking into account the red background, the current requested variance would be less than what Ames had when Ames was here, just for sake of argument on the size, but it doesn't take into account what the new zoning says, so there's, there's give and take on both sides, and if you add the red paint section, it just pulls it through the roof.
Yeah. Well, actually, I mean, the circles actually got red in the middle, but anyways.
Yeah, so the lettering and the circles, the white, is mounted on the red.
Right. I mean, to a certain extent, it's, it's part of the Target's branding, I guess. Well, okay, if we start looking at our balancing act, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, we did talk about other directional signage, we could be, it's three square feet, I believe. And you could have as many of those as you would like to have. Undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties, I don't, it's, it's a commercial area, we don't know that. Whether the request is substantial on one aspect, it could be considered, and one aspect is, I think it was along with what was granted for other stores in that same location, I believe. And whether the request will have adverse fiscal or environmental effects, I don't see any of those happening, so... The basic thing was, with what has been given to us and explained to us is, there's a certain amount of reduction taking place with two of the Target circles being reduced in size. One from one twenty to one thirteen, the other one from one forty-four to one thirteen, which about thirty-eight square feet, and then there's a twenty-four point six. And the other, I can't remember which number that was.
EO six.
EO six, okay, so I wrote the sixty-two point six square feet. And the request is for seventy-seven square foot for the drive-up. So we're basically adding fourteen point four square feet to...
And possibly removing that one on there.
I was removing that one, I had that.
That was it, did you mention that?
The order pickup thing, it's gonna go on windows.
It's gonna go, yeah, that's number six.
The one that's already facing the woods.
This one here.
No, this, you're talking about removing the one that's facing the woods?
No, that's gonna get, no, that's gonna...
All, all the circles stay the same, except that they're being reduced in size.
Oh, I thought we said that they could take that one off.
They could, I mean, but... I would be a, I would be a corporate, find out if it is, we were just given out options. Right, that is part of the balancing, whether it can be achieved by other means and reducing, would be one of the means.
Right.
Okay.
So then, I guess, I see a couple of different, like we said, options, either we have all of these and we put the order pickup in the window, or maybe, if, would it be more ideal to remove the one facing the woods altogether? Or with the order...
That would put you underneath your variance size. I mean...
Except for the red.
Except for the, that's, yeah, I guess, are we considering the red as signage? Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have a hard time saying that that whole block is, is red, because it's just basically the area around the circle and you're highlighting your entrance area to me, that's...
But you need that for visibility for that red target to show up.
Right. I see.
But there have been Targets that have highlighted their doors in red and put the white sign over to the side, so it's not on that background.
So if we were to, pending Targets, okay, but move the order pickup to the window and talk about the discussion with the red paneling to see if we can get rid of that, would that be okay? In theory?
In theory. Yeah, and that's half the reason why, it's like there's some balls in the air, and you just...
No, of course, I totally understand.
And realize that you're, you're not from, uh, alcohol.
Yeah, I'm from New York City, so... I'm a coke user.
Drive-up.
Yeah. But I'm trying to think, would it, would it be possible, I don't know how feasible it is to give a conditional approval of those, even if I don't have...
You don't have the actual authority to do it.
Yeah.
We don't do conditional, it's voting yes or no. It's either you comply, or you don't, or you get a variance. So there's no if, there's no feelings, there's no, it's either gets voted on or not, you could go back to court, you could ask for a table, go back to corporate and ask. You're not supposed to negotiate, this is what was on the table right now, is they're, they're going outside their purview to even negotiate. So this is on the table, this is what we're offering, and then it goes to a bow for them.
Right.
And there's no, well, you guys said last time, well, you felt this, no, that's outside the purview of this board.
Right.
And there's no conditionals, if it approved, if it met the criteria, then we, as the code officers, approve it. But if it doesn't, that's what they're here for.
I meant more so conditional in the sense, if you say these, if we do these and then submit the revised plans for what we discussed, then...
I mean, there's, there's other board members that might be involved at that time.
Right, yes.
For the most part, I would think that it would look relatively positive.
But you can't be, you can't guarantee another board member will, won't be on here at the book, absolutely no.
Yeah, I understand.
But you also have a better chance to...
Right.
Yeah.
Is there, so there's no chance I can move forward without having to come back, then?
You could, you could. You could, you could absolutely ask for a vote, if you want to say what was submitted, this is what I'm looking for, and if you ask for a vote, but if they could vote yes, you only gotta get two members, two out of the two, but if you only, or three out of the two, if you don't, then it's done. The variances then saying will be denied, so you could ask for a vote right now.
And then denied and I can't come back and fight with them.
You guys have a substantial change in plan.
So substantial, could that be considered what we discussed today?
No. Substantial means like cold and bland.
Fifty percent or less is typically what New York State ZBA, or when it goes to if you've ever done an Article seventy eight, fifty percent or less of what you're asking for for the variance, so if you're asking for X, Y, and Z. Fifty is usually the typical number, but if it goes on percentages, if it's an area of use, that goes very deep into what is allowed to come back. So they don't want just coming back, well, all right, how about twelve more square feet, how about fourteen? And it returns, that's what the court system doesn't wanna see, or New York State area variances, new variances.
Yeah, more so trying to understand, because if I were to request a vote, it's not if I'm, if I were to come back with an alternative, it wouldn't be in a sense like, oh, fourteen, oh, twelve, more so, okay, I understand now, like, what we would have to do.
I mean, if you go back to targeting, saying, hey, we move this one since it's gonna be.
Yeah.
It'd be under the square footage, basically, except for the the red around the.
Right.
Yeah, you have the chance to table to still have a.
And it's a great area, you can come back anytime.
No, I understand, it's a lovely, lovely area. Is there any possibility I could chat real quick to a colleague and kind of just ten, just, I'm not really sure what direction this is.
Well, you want to table for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever, and maybe we'll do somebody else.
Yeah, if that's okay. Thank you so much.
So, for the note record, the appeal number seventeen seventy, or sev- I'm sorry, what?
Seventeen seventy eight.
Seventeen twenty eight.
Seventeen twenty eight is asking for a appeal, for at least, until the other two can be heard, then we'll go back on the last for the end. Do not, uh, push the next one. So, I am not gonna be able to pronounce your name directly, not even close, but appeal number seventeen seventy eight, SJK? SJK, okay, uh, SJK Properties on one archway, you guys can come right forward, right where she was just sitting, they're asking for an area variance request to be allowed to add five additional signs to the property, two signs on the diesel canopy. Three signs on the gas company, and increase to a hundred and one square feet to exceed the previous granted two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, and twenty twelve. And is over the square footage is allowed in a commercial district, Brett has the pictures that we took and then some that were provided to us.
All right, so, we have a list of the signs proposed, you have the freestanding sign on Route twenty two is sixty two point five square feet. The second freestanding high-rise sign, which is essentially the variety seven, the interstate, and and twenty one feet over the required vertical height, and that is one hundred and sixty nine square feet. The awning sign on the building facing eighty seven on the north side. Nation sign for subway and barks are twelve square feet. We have eighty seven right here, the off-ramp, and then the actual gas station is right here. That is our C district, here in the red, you see the building located. Little closer aerial view, here are a few of the canopies that are referenced, along with the high-rise freestanding. Little closer view, there's the diesel canopy is over here, this will be the gas canopy. Uh, that's just a different view of it, again, the gas canopy, the diesel canopy, you can see some of the signage here that is located on the building. This is from today, this is the diesel canopy with the Valero emblem here and diesel on the other side, then this is one view of the gas canopy. With the Valero sign there, along with the other view with Valero again, and then the Valero emblem. You can catch a little glimpse here of the freestanding sign with the Valero emblem here, Yazzy's Market and the Dunkin' Donuts. And then we have some photos that were provided by the applicant, which I believe that they did, I guess.
For the record, this is the codes department, uh, we went to your site, we informed you as they were going up that you did not have signs, you continue to put up signs. There is also a written letter, uh, that was sent to your place of business saying, cease and desist with putting up signs, you still continue to put up the signs, and they put up more signs after Alan. Mr. Reese visited your place and instructed him to stop, they did not, they continued to add signs on top of the variance, and explained, and gave the all of the variances with the ones that were there and the percentage numbers we over, and then you continued to put up signs. So instead of writing a ticket going for the judge, our town attorney recommended that you file for a zoning board appeals variance. And now it's two months later, uh, because the variance didn't get put in, so now we're in front of you guys. For signs, not proposed signs, signs that are already up illegally, on top of a variance that was given as you can see in two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, and another one that was there by variance, it was a precedent one. That they gave up all their square footage and signs on the canopy on the building to go to the freestanding one that is on eighty seven. So it's not like they were uninformed of the variances, they chose to go for without any authorization or any permit, so that's why the signs are currently already up, and that's why they're in front of you asking for that. You can take it from there.
Uh, I was not here, I was out of country. And when this thing happened, and signage company has an impression that they have a permit. So they they keep on doing it, when I came back over here, then I see the email and the letter. So I stopped back over there and uh, if we compare with the other gas station in the area, everybody has two signs on canopy, one, like, uh, this is a mobile.
We have those pictures, yes.
And Sunoco, and.
Actually, the last Sunoco, uh, nearly a street, you know. Actually, I have one Sunoco sign in the trunk, that's all they've granted.
And on the diesel canopy, people were stopping over there for getting the gas. So that's the reason they put the diesel sign, so people know that it's a diesel pumps, not the gas pumps.
Well, the nozzle won't fit a car.
Diesel nozzle won't fit into a car, so they gotta figure that out. And you got, and you got the green, so that tells you it's diesel, so.
Wouldn't be surprised if almost people stopped a little bit for the gas.
I would, I guess you're all right.
Yeah. That's a decent, that's, this is the gas one. So actually, like, on your, in the main gas canopy section, you actually have three signs on that one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, one is a dead local. Right. But it's still considered to be a sign. So you got sixty point six, sixty seven point six square feet of signage on, on that. And the diesel, another twenty six point eight plus seven, thirty three point eight, almost thirty four. And we got is there any requirement for them to have to advertise the gas price?
The gas prices are not included in these, in these totals.
Okay, so it would just be the top part of that sign then? Which is about six by six. Place down there. That's another thirty six square feet. And the pylon sign was how much, Brett?
Hundred ninety two?
One sixty nine.
One sixty nine is the high-rise sign here for eighty seven?
Which is, it's the same thing. Sixty nine, thirty three, thirty six. No, it's just a stripe.
No, it's not.
No, that's the, the B. Yeah, I think there's those stripes. I thought we had it recently.
My question is, the yellow stripe on the top, isn't that considered part of the logo?
Anything that's on there, you're correct, so it's all part of it.
Right, so on here, the measurements, it's highlighted that just the Valero is being considered for the sign and the logo itself, and not the yellow stripe, which appears to be part of your logo.
I don't take it that way, because if it was, they would have it happen to be also on their main sign.
Oh, you may know this one.
Yeah, no, she's talking about.
Yeah.
But they don't have it on.
They could have it here, though.
Yeah. So right now, it looks like about two hundred and five square feet of signage.
Plus extra signs that weren't allowed.
Yeah, and what is actually allowed?
So, for right now, for right, the freestanding sign on twenty two, sixty two point five. Second freestanding sign on eighty seven is one sixty nine, which is good, and it's twenty one feet over required height, that's five variances was on there. Owning sign on the building facing eighty seven, so on the north side of the building, so they get the one in the back, and then twelve square feet sign for subway and barks. All these other ones are illegal. So one, two, three, four, five, four illegal signs, and then all the square footage above that, so if you wanna go by number or signs.
Good question, good question. Uh, open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And that's DNA, buddy, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go, I think it was down to the county on this one also. Yes. Okay, the following action taken by the county planning board regarding this zoning referral in compliance with the New York State general municipal law, Article twelve B, Section two thirty nine N. This decision is not depending upon the local municipality, but may impact the local board's voting requirements to add contrary to the county decision. A county decision of disapproval or approval of complications may only be overturned by the local municipal board by a majority vote plus one, with a full membership like the local board. Da da da, and was taken as a local issue, so it's in the table. So make some comments, board members.
You did. I did, it's a diesel.
We could have more comments than that.
I do.
You know, I I see your many photos in here from various gas stations, uh, so they're actually in the city, which doesn't count, because they're not in the town, which would make it a difference there also.
Only two of them that were submitted are actually in the town, the rest are on the city, and none of them. And both of those comply with, uh.
Right, they have one.
One has mobile, one has the other one, and they have a freestanding sign that's smaller than this, so the, all the other ones that were submitted to us for yours comply with local zoning laws, the mobile one that's on the twenty two was case, case precedent setting in seventies. Been up there a long time.
I guess my suggestion would be to go to your sign guy and say, you goofed up, never got a permit.
We had the permit for the big one, we gave them the, uh, this sign, uh, Highland.
Well, that was replacing with, with the kind.
Yeah, so I, if we take the emblem sign out, will that will work? That will be true, but Valero, I mean, that's required by that to have that sign.
I mean, you got signs on every single pump, you got signs on the overhead canopies, you got diesel signs, you got Valero V signs.
Well, there is a Valero sign on the freestanding sign.
Yeah.
You have a picture of that?
It's there in the corner.
So you have, you have one, if that is still a hundred and sixty, we don't have actual square footage.
Yeah, corporation, they've dealt with this stuff before. They could take that out.
They're all, all by go time, given the diesel one.
That's our main goal here, is to try to keep the sign like that. So we don't end up like us some cities that have this signs, every five hundred feet, now every fifty feet, rather. We don't, on the side of Highland, I'm not trying to hurt it, I'm just trying to prevent it.
But the, and the part of the, other part of the problem is, it was those signs were granted many years ago, so every time you post the variance on that, you open it back up.
Yeah, yeah. But a lot of this could have been saved if they would have just listened to the codes officers that said, hey, look, you don't, you can't do this. You know, this, this doesn't fall.
Unfortunately, I was not here.
No, understood, understood.
And people who are working over there, they, they cannot say anything. They are not authorized. I, I mean, if you, if you look at other gas station, mobile, I got those, the other side of the Highland, you have signs on both end of the canopy. It says mobile.
But see, those were given up so that they could have the big high-rise sign. That's what originally happened.
No, he's saying that they have on their canopy that have the mobile.
Right, but they didn't have it on the canopy there originally, so that they could have the high-rise out on eighty seven.
Those were conditions back in two thousand eight of the original variance.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, if we look at whether the document can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. That's a tough one, but the problem is, is that all these were not supposed to be there. Undesirable change in neighborhood character to nearby properties, it's over signed. Whether the request is substantial, which would be the, the killer right there, because those signs were given up for the eighty seven sign. The big pylon. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, that would necessarily apply, but did you get it?
Mm-hmm.
We've had a fruit fly flying around over here, so. So that's, the motion would be to exempt or define the the variance.
Well, I'm, I'm up against this variance because the signs are already there, they need to come down, and we can't even discuss it with you because it's already done. You're looking for a variance, you know, that's usually the time you put a sign that you put. You're looking for a variance, you know, that's usually the time you put a sign that you put up. So I'm going to make a motion to deny that.
No, second.
As a show of hands. Throw a call vote.
I'm sorry.
Henry Ho.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Dooham.
Yes.
Melanie Mark.
Yes.
What's the timeframe I have with that?
Deep or bad, uh. Time frame for removal?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Uh, I think we need more time because they need to order the pylons to.
The, the big one up on eighty-seven stay.
Not that one, these on the canopy, on the.
The canopy, yeah.
Yeah, so if they, they need to put something on it, the plane, white or blue, whatever it is. But they need to order from the company who made the sign of this company.
Yeah.
You've already had a sign, illegal sign up for over a hundred and twenty days. You were informed, now you're asking for more time to leave a sign up illegally after you knew it was there?
Well, unfortunately, when I came back, it was like, like.
I'm sorry.
I did not to have them, and the last month, they said it's too late to, uh, edit it.
Submission date.
So.
And the Yazzy ones, to clarify in here, the ones that are on the building, you have twelve square feet, those appear to be over the twelve square feet. So making sure that all of these are in compliance. The one that's on the actual building itself too.
Is.
You're, like, we gave you the variance to show everything that's allowed, so it's not only those that have to comply, it's everything else that was on there. It was part of the variances that you originally done. So you've already exceeded that and continue to put up the signage when Alan clearly went out there and told him to stop. So it's not that they didn't authorize it. If you look at the variances, specifically says, on the building, twelve square feet. On the other one, X amount of square feet, it's all there, so they have to comply, if they don't comply, they have to come down.
So right on the wall, it's supposed to be twelve square.
For both, so there was two, it would used to be subway and then barks. So whatever you're, so you still have, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, I'm sorry, Dunkin' Donuts and Zyazzy's. So those are the maximum square footage of the ones on the building, your twelve square feet combined.
Combined.
So right now, you're over that number already. So your building sign's out of compliance, the Valero, the diesel, and the emblem on there. And as Mary Ann said, that, you know, the stripes or whatever that's there, that's not even considering what's on the pump. So right now, where it says, you have on all your pumps, they don't consider that signage, but it's still signage. But the board is not even looking at the ones right there where it says Valero on the pump. And confirming that the freestanding sign is within the red, whoever your sign company is, I would hand them the variance that you have and say, and please show that this is in compliance now. The same one that Alan brought out there and the one that we mailed to you, has all the findings that they're discussing from eight, two thousand eight, two thousand twelve. All the ones that are on there, I mean, it clearly states it of what was actually allowed. So I would get with your sign company, with you, Alan, your sign company, ultimately it goes to you as the owner.
Yeah, I understand that. The only thing is, the sign problem, if we take the sign out, I don't have any issue with that. The problem is they have to put something on it to replace that Valero sign, they have to put the plain, uh, piece of the panel.
Typically, those are bolted on over the panel.
Uh, no, I guess this company works like a, uh, channels and they put it.
Yeah.
That'd be for this board, if they wanted to.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be, let's cut you off, give the applicant thirty days to remove the signs. If somebody from the codes department goes out and they're still up and the applicant can show that within those thirty days, they need to order the replacement signs, we'll give them some leeway, but if you get out there, if we get out there in October and nothing's been done, no new signs are ordered, that's going to be a violation, the applicant will be in court. I think that's a fair way to do it.
Yeah, what we're basically saying is that go do your job. You get thirty days and then if somebody comes out and says you haven't got it done yet, you can say they're on order, they're going to be here another week or whatever.
But you'll have to prove that they're on order.
Yeah, yeah.
You just can't say.
And then you'll, you'll be able to say, uh, you know, you're working on it. Alright, so we're gonna go to number.
We're gonna, so it was a, we did the.
Yeah, we did the roll follow, yep.
One, three, forty-eight.
Side block one, that side bar goes back in because one part of it's called size. So once it's subdivided out, parts, or, uh, not your motor, the front side, these went to there and et cetera, but in variance because it wasn't subdivided up by the. Uh, we're, we're going to Drex, then we'll come back. Center.
From the hot seat.
Yep.
So what we have is Brett, come on, the next one, is appeal twenty-three, forty-eight, Tracy Fountain.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from Drex, is requesting to be allowed a forty-five square foot building sign, which is twenty-eight square, twenty-eight square feet larger than the seventeen square foot allowed for this building in a commercial district. We do have some pictures, uh, and some, uh, renderings what was submitted to us that Brett can show you guys.
We have eighty-seven here, I can come over ahead. This is the location of the Drex subs, this was the former stores, the new stores have actually been built right here. That's the building in question, we are in the commercial district. Come over here, there's an aerial view, there's another little building on the property here where they do have a courier service out of, this is the building with the parking lot in the back. This is the street view of the building, the roof on it. A closer view. And then that is the proposed location of the signage in question. It's all yours.
So, uh, so we're just, we have a sign, because of the franchise, so the sign company that they deal with.
Yeah.
They're trying to go the new way and try and make all the signs the same. One of the problems with, you can see over the door, so that's going to be the main entrance, that, as you can see, how the building's in there like lengthwise. So the, the allowable amount obviously goes from the storefront edge, which is thirty-four feet. But because our main entrance is going to be on the side, that's a sixty-foot side. So that's why they designed the sign, the size they did, um, just trying to be in proportion to, um, the, that's what, you can't see the addition on that. There's another twenty feet on the other side of that. Um, and right over the door right there, which is going to be the main entrance, it's a very, I don't know if it's just over a foot. So putting a sign over the main entrance was not really an option. So that's why they did the, the roof sign, I think it's, they have a couple stores in, um, Syracuse that they're putting on the roof. I believe the Vincena store just did that as well, they're like the individual letters in the jambs.
But you're gonna have the, the pylon sign out by the road, right?
So there's a, yeah, there's a road sign, um, I believe that's twenty feet tall. And that's more, right, so you can see it, like, right off eighty-seven and. Yeah, that'd be right, right out front, there'd be a pole. So it's like a smaller, just basically, so you can see it, you're going up and down the road, you know, from the distance.
So it's your pylon sign or your freestanding sign?
It's, it's right, it's going to be in that area, yeah, that's not the actual sign pole, but it's going to be pretty much just like that. I think that was just the one that was left over, whatever, um, so yeah, there will be a, a tall sign there. Basically, again, so you can see it from, you know, going up and down the road, and also when you come off the exit or eighty-seven, it's, it'd be very visible. But you, the main entrance is going to be right there on the side, so like when you pull in, we kind of, we wanted a sign to flag, you know, here's the main entrance kind of.
Now, across the front, where the, the wrap is, is, that's going to be your, your entrance area?
In the front, right there, is?
No, on the side.
On the side, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, we're the two right there, the door.
Are there going to be windows?
There would be one window to the left of that, right in that area, and that'll be it. And then there's twenty feet more of an addition on the other end, that's on there now, but, um, and no other windows on that end. And then there'd be the three windows across the front.
I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter?
There was one letter submitted, I'll read.
Yes, go for it.
Date August twelfth, to the Lutzberg Planning Board Zones and Codes, I am objecting to an expanded Drex signage as stated by the letter I received from the zoning board. I bought my office building over fifty years ago because it was a quiet area, not a, not obtrusive building, signage unlikely free, which is overrun with signage and traffic. Please keep this neighborhood welcoming. Low-key been pleasant. Sincerely, business owner of seven-one-eight-zero-root-nine, Bonnie Bijou.
This did go down to the county, uh, Mr. Chairman, for a two thirty-nine M referral. Installation of forty-five square foot building sign, which is twenty-eight square feet larger than the seventeen square foot allowed for this. Following action was taken by the Clinton County Planning Board regarding zoning referral and compliance with the New York State General Municipal Law, twelve B, Section two thirty-nine M. This decision is not binding upon the local municipality, but impact local board's voting requirements. Contrary to the county's decision, a county decision of disapproval or approval with modifications may only be overturned by the local municipality board in a majority plus one vote. Full membership of the local board, except four votes for a five member, five votes for a seven member. Uh, it was voted seven oh in favor of the action with no comments.
Board members have any comments or questions that they'd like to have gone over with? Ms. Fountain?
All that has gone, is it possible to take it off the roof and mount it on the building? On that front corner there, if the window is going to be to the left of the doors.
Right.
Would a sign be more visible, mounted on the building than on the roof?
That definitely can be an option.
Because it would be closer to the street.
Right. Yeah, we just want, kind of wanted to flag, yeah, when you pull in, like, here's the main entrance, because there is another little building on my property, I mean, I own the other building too, but. So when you come in, it's like a joint apartment lot, so it was kind of just like, hey, here's the entrance, that's absolutely an option.
And then that could be reduced in size to fit that area.
That's absolutely an option. It's one thing with just building it, I mean, we can kind of do it, however we need to do it, it's.
I like that idea, is putting it on the building.
That's, I mean, that's your, your call, you do have the high pylon sign out in the front, so you're.
Yeah.
It's basically just trying to say where your entrance area is.
Right.
So what, if you did do that and then, would that reduce its size to what?
If we put. That's what would be allowed on the front, right?
Now, you're going to have three windows under the front.
Yeah, the, right, facing the road.
So you can put signage on the inside of that.
Right.
Facing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, and that, that would really, you know, help.
And then again, that, on this side was mainly for the entrance. Mm-hmm. We would put the entrance on the front, it's just it was enough room, too close to the road, it just was really ideal, so. Um, there is a window right, like we said, on the left, I don't remember, okay, there it is right there, I say that's a current. So maybe they can put it.
Shot of the other canal.
I know, and I think I probably smothered it before we got the addition done. So you're proposing maybe like to the left of the window, or even to the right, or the, the door?
It's more visible from the street.
If you put it on the left, yeah.
Right, and then you'd have the pylon on there, and that would kind of indicate.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, if she did that and kept it to that. I mean, how many square foot?
I think it was around, close to seventeen square feet, it was the, I think, allowable size for the, like, two, something by eight, yeah.
Now seventeen square was, would be.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. So yeah, we kept it to that side and then put it on. I don't know, I don't know how much room is between that window and the front of the building, the front corner of that building, but. Our other thigh at first was also maybe to put a canopy, like over, because again, there's not a lot of clearance over the door, so we thought maybe a canopy. There was a couple of the drugs that had, the actual canopy had the logo on, on the canopy, I don't know if that ever be an option, but. For now, I really just want to concentrate on the sign, whether, you know, put the sign up and then.
Can you go to the one that actually said about the square footage? Wants to be forty-five square feet in that.
Yeah.
It's forty-five, they're asking for forty-five, and it's twenty-eight square feet larger, because the building's narrow, it's only seventeen square feet, which is allowed. Because they're so close to the road, and the building's smaller on the front.
So you don't get any multiplier, and I don't, I don't have a drawing of the building dimensions.
Yeah, the building's thirty-four wide, and now that we have the addition on the back, it's sixty feet long.
Yeah, so the thirty-four is where the seventeen comes from.
Right, right, because that's the front, so that's, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. It's just we went bigger, I think, because proportionally, it's sixty feet on that side, you want the main entrance.
And I guess that goes back to my, my question again, is that if you were to put the sign down on the building towards that front corner, what, would you be able to do it in this seventeen square feet, or would you want to?
I don't, I.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know how much room is right there, because of the window, I don't think it'd be much more, I don't think it could be more than that, honestly, because. I mean, it'd be like, I think it was like two feet tall by eight feet, was this, I mean, was the allowable size. So I don't even know if, if there's eight feet between, you know, where the window's going to end to the front. Maybe if it was.
Five by three, yeah, five by three.
Something, yeah.
That would be fifteen, and it'd be all out too.
Yeah.
But you don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
Maybe you would want to table this and come back again?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, you could find out exactly what the windows are.
The dimensions are.
It's, it's just an option.
Yeah, no, that's definitely an option, because, again, I, I don't really know the dimensions, I probably shouldn't.
When you answer your questions, it's very difficult for the board to give a variance for businesses as open. So it says, is there a financial hardship, or is there a hardship of this? It's very difficult to give a hardship variance to a business, you can't say that, well, we need more people to not even open yet. So what they've done, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, what they've done before is say, after nine months or a year of being open, people don't know where we're here. So that's why we need the bigger variance, so what they're trying to do is saying, hey, can you comply now? Maybe you come back in a year and say, people are driving right by, they don't see us. I'm just saying, it's, we've seen denials of people that, our doors aren't open, but we need bigger.
Yeah.
How do you justify that?
It's, in this case, really, it's the franchise are designing the signs, and this is like their newest, latest, greatest, that are going on all their buildings. So they propose that they're the ones that, you know, designed it, sent it to me, and the one that found it was too big, like.
The second part is, you don't even know if the sign company can make a seventeen or a fifteen square foot sign, maybe they don't even make them that size. So to agree to put one on there, and then they say, we don't.
Right, make it that.
Physically make it that.
It might be twenty square feet.
No, but.
And then that's such a variance.
Relatively minor variance.
Are those windows in place right now, are those holes cut out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the windows that actually fit there just arrived, so. Otherwise, I would propose, okay, how about we don't do a window on that side and do the sign set, I would actually, that would have been, but.
So then you're going to ask us to table it next month?
Yeah, and then I'll find out if we can just do something smaller on that side, I'm, I'm not opposed to one hour, I need to do it, I'm just. Brought it forth because, presented to make itself.
So, so may make a motion to.
Motion.
Show of hands. Throw a call vote.
Heather Yeh.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mary Ann Alexander. Patrick Dooham. Melanie Mark.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Target. Please let know that Target, appeal.
Seventeen twenty-eight.
Seven twenty, seventeen twenty-eight is back in front of us after a branch.
Consultation?
Yes, a consultation, I believe we have a good solution. So as we talked about, the red paneling issue. So we're proposing, instead of having the red paneling, to have sort of a light brown paneling instead. So we're proposing instead of having the red paneling, to have sort of a light brown paneling instead, so it wouldn't be that red, red signage. And then we can move the order pickup to the window. That is our solution.
It's not really the color that matters.
Yeah.
It's the fact that.
It's the paneling?
It's the paneling, what it, what it's doing is it's, it's being used to make the sign visible.
Well, currently, there is.
I mean, anything's gonna make the sign visible, right?
Any color is gonna.
But red is their logo on it.
I'll agree with you of that, but I won't agree that changing it a different color doesn't mean it's still a sign. Because you're gonna have some color.
You gotta have a color.
Yeah.
The red.
No, no, Target. Yeah, I agree with that.
We see the red as being the writing, so by turning it a different color, it would can be more in characteristic with the building and provide less.
So that's a picture of, of our target, so are you something like in those brown families?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Something brown, very neutral to fit with it.
Okay, all right. So I can go back to on my math.
I can help you out with the math.
So the order pickup, we go to the windows inside. Reduce in the size of two Target circles by thirty-eight square feet. And it was twenty-four point six was after.
That was the order pickup, so now that's going into the window.
So that's sixty-two point six square feet redo.
Yeah.
And your drive, group drive up pickup, da, 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 is seventy-seven square feet. Which would mean for my, I guess I'm looking at one fourteen point four square feet increase in actual variance.
So Brett and I came up with, with the numbers that she gave us, one thirteen, one through those changes, getting rid of the, moving that one sign to the window and not having the red background, we've got a variance of five thirty-six point four, right now they're at five forty.
So they're under.
Yeah.
So they're under.
Where are we getting the discrepancies in numbers as well?
Yeah, that, that should be ironed out. You're saying we're still fourteen over, where, so we have. Let's go through what, so. Sign E one, they're asking for a hundred and thirteen square feet, are we reading that, Brett? Sign E two, a hundred and thirteen square feet.
Yes.
E three, one ninety-five point seven.
That's the front target.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I didn't take that one into account.
Okay. E four. It looks like either thirty-seven and a half or thirty-five, I have thirty-five parentheses from Steve, I don't know why. What do you have for E four, thirty-seven and a half or thirty-five?
We have thirty.
We use thirty-seven point five, so that's good. E five, seventy-seven point two. And then E six comes out. So if you add all, if you add up all the numbers I just gave you, you're at five thirty-six point four.
Okay.
So if that's what they're asking for, they're under what they currently have. And then the E seven for TBD, is that still where, what is that?
Excuse me, the what?
This is E seven.
EO seven. TBD signage.
To be determined for the E seven.
Would you be able to bring up that drawing again? I just have the elevation instead of the signage.
We have this right here, the one after. Yeah, it's on line of.
TBD signage, yeah, disregard that, so sorry about the communicate, miscommunication. This is actually our sign package, I've been referring to the elevations, the architectural elevations, because it's not typical of us to submit for sign permits with these variances, just our standard process. So that's why I've been referencing these instead of that, but hence why I had the one thirteen and that one did not. But it, these are the numbers I'm.
So there's no TBD.
There's no TBD, that was.
Someone across that, so the numbers I just read off are what you're asking for, one thirteen, one thirteen, one ninety-five point seven, thirty-seven point five, seventy-seven point two, that's it.
Exactly.
Now, it's putting the drive up inside a window, so it's not considered.
Not the top of the order.
I'm sorry, order pickup, I apologize. Forty-four point six goes in the window, so that came out.
So, okay, so with the two reductions of the circle size and the order pickup. Drive up.
Okay.
Even a reduction in the numbers is still a variance because there's still four hundred and whatever, four hundred ninety-six square feet over what is allowed.
All set?
I should do the bouncing act, I guess. Uh, whether the number can be achieved by other. And you said we have the opportunity to. Undesirable change in neighborhood character is, is a commercial, and a signed area. Whether the request is substantial according to the newest.
Exactly.
And whether the request will have adverse fiscal or environmental effects, and I do not see any of that. So it would be a matter of saying, to approve the variance for the Target drive up with the conditions that we have worked through.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Show of hands. Thank you. Roll call.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick Goodham.
Yes.
Melanie Mark.
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your patience.
Make a motion to, uh.
Thank you.
Do you have any business with that?
Usually mark that down for you guys.
Yeah, I, uh, I was told that my speeding ticket was gonna be handed.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Out the door and downstairs, you got in the wrong place.
Court's down in the basement, you just learned a lot. They're probably not, they may not be there anymore.
It's right on the other side of the building.
Yeah, we just sort of form over now, but if you call tomorrow, call the board tomorrow and ask for the same job, we'll put her number on here.
It could be open, it's trial night. So you're gonna walk back out here, you're gonna walk around and you're gonna go down the set of stairs.
Okay.
And do it quickly as possible. You don't need a sign variance?
No.
No, this is bad.
That's mine, tell her I told you to call, she would hear by mistake, and then she has a question. That way you don't get told from this night, or if it's not favorable. And honestly, it's, it's, I can have a permission. If she was, have her call me, I'll call exactly what happened to me.
I didn't see anybody get a fine or anything.
Uh, thank you guys, I'll go try right now.
Good luck.
He's not an attorney, but he stayed at a Holiday Inn. He didn't see the court sign, maybe the court needs a bigger sign.